To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And right before we get our meeting going, I just, for the public's sake, you probably don't need an introduction, but our new county clerk, Merle Gueye.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on March the first, two thousand twelve sixteen is now called to order. Members present is Merle Gueye clerk, Charles McCann president, Charles Vance commissioner, Thomas Rainey junior commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the amendments in the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on February the sixteenth, two thousand twelve at ten a.m.
So, I'll second that. So, we're gonna do a change of amendment after that later on? Was there some changes in?
There is amendment in, there's an order to amend, and it's not that.
Give us a previous meeting.
January the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't realize it. We already approved those amendments. Okay. Okay, we got a motion in second. Call for vote, be all yes. Motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is Michael Browning, incident here, from the Harts Middle School Baseball. He has sent a letter in, it says, "Dear sir, as you know, the Harts pre-KA baseball and softball programs are mostly funded by the Lincoln County Board of Education. Due to the fact that we have moved into our new building and are using most of our funds to help in the transitioning and preparation of the new building, we are having difficulty providing all the funds necessary to support our baseball and softball programs. These programs are in need of new equipment and uniforms, as well as field repair and upkeep. Lincoln County Commission can help us by providing funds to help our students and our community represent the Harts area and Lincoln County in a positive way. Thank you in advance for your support. Sincerely, Michael Browning."
Okay. I'd just like to say, I asked that this be placed on the agenda after Michael, some of his parents contacted me. Some of the equipment the kids are going to be using, unless we can get it replaced, is not up to the codes necessary to make sure that the kids are safe. And I would just like to make a motion that we provide one thousand for baseball and one thousand for the softball programs, so two thousand total. Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion in second, be all yes. Motion carries.
Do you have any idea what's the cost, any problem or anything?
I don't have it either. Yeah, we usually try it on a good one.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, adult bill, should I write them down?
Well, we're.
Well, no interesting pictures. We have plenty of interesting stuff.
In line.
In line, yes. Let's do it. We want to give you a little update about the wastewater projects, and then I'd like to give you a little update on what we want the counselor program as well. You'll see just sort of an overview of what's been happening. We've been spending a lot of time in the watershed. We're still working on this issue of leaking tanks. And my hope is, maybe by the next meeting, I'll have some other findings and some recommendations. What we're doing right now is we're actually dye testing these tanks. We haven't got them all done. But that's the latest plan, rather than taking pictures inside, we're dying them from the outside. The first thing you've got there, after the update, Ryan has now been with us for ninety days, which was his probationary period. So, I'd like to recommend to the commission that because he's completed his probationary period, he'll go on as a full-time regular employee.
And the duration will be to the length of a grand, or have we got any end date?
We don't have, it goes on forever. No, we don't have an end date. But it would, it's tied directly to our ability to have, get funding.
There you go.
And to funding for, as well, for phase four. He has, he's actually gonna be paid.
Through phase?
Through phase four, and the commission will be reimbursed.
In the dark print there, it says, "Change of pay rate effective March one, beat the day, twelve seventy-five per hour," and he's on an eight-hour work day.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half, forty-hour work week.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to extend this employment.
So moved.
A motion in second. All yes. Motion carries.
Ryan's gonna go over, there's a lot of stuff here about phase four. He's gonna go over the, some of the tentative budget stuff in that.
We're looking at a total tentative budget of about seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Most of that will still be through construction, six hundred and six thousand for construction. We want to do twelve direct discharge systems, four in-ground systems. We've got some siphons, as well as pump tanks, that we want to replace, and we want to upgrade some UV lights, a little bit of dirt work, installing a French drain, and then we want to move a tank. We're installing a French drain because there's too much water pooling over top of drain fields, as well as there's too much water pooling over top of heat modules, so we want to move the modules. A lot of it is, the rest, the other big chunks is there for administrative, mostly salaries. Looks like we've got some supplies and equipment. Contingency was the other big one. But compared to the other three, you know, we're doing pretty good. The first phase was obviously the highest amount, we had the most homes. The second phase, we had seven hundred and eighteen thousand for twenty systems. Third phase was seven hundred and twenty-six thousand for twenty-five systems. Ninety-one thousand is for eighteen new systems, as well as these other upgrades that we'd like to do. And this is all tentative, by the way, it's not been approved yet. Next page, we're gonna, this is the bid schedule that we're, we'd like to try to get approved. We've been submitting the form of proposal for, I don't know, about the past month, and we actually just submitted the final? Is it the final? Yeah.
What we hope is the final.
What we hope is the final, the final form proposal, and in that, we'd like to start this new bid process. We're hoping to get it by March thirteenth, but they may decide that we March twentieth is opposed to March thirteenth. We've got a meeting coming up, hopefully March twenty-eighth, and that's just kind of giving a little bit of education about what we're trying to get done, and it's not required for anything, it's just kind of to give experience to people who may be new to the bidding process for us. Then we have a required pre-bid meeting on March twenty-ninth, then another required pre-bid meeting on March thirtieth. Now, we decided to do two required pre-bid meetings because it's such a large project. We felt like we couldn't get to all the homes during one, one pre-bid meeting, because we'll go out to all the homes that we're gonna be working on. And in A, B, and C, we had the direct discharge, the moving of the systems. What is it?
Probably.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Overstepping that, so.
No.
Trying to, trying to get it all. But like I said, this is our tentative bid schedule right now. Hopefully, we'll get bids received around April fifth, and then, last but not least, we will try to award those bids, or well, the committee will award those bids. That's all.
Okay, with that, is, do we need approval to go ahead and do this, Peter, or you're just gonna do that after I'm, how you, what do you have?
What we're, what we'll need, I think, first is the DEP to say, yep, we're allowed to follow that schedule, and then we can come back to the admission. Maybe. When's the next commission meeting?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Maybe tentatively approve the, or approve the tentative schedule. That way, if we need to start the process on the thirteenth, we could.
Well, that's, yeah, I thought maybe, everything's pending, I'm sure.
It is all pending.
Even though employment's, uh.
Yeah, I know.
But we think everything will work out, but you're.
Right.
So, you would like first to entertain a motion to just adopt this bid schedule that you presented?
We would please.
Thank you.
So much.
Motion second. All yes. Motion carries.
And then the last part is a lot of semi-technical stuff, just about what we're trying to do in this bid. Like Ryan said, we're gonna continue phase two and phase three with all these direct discharge systems, where the final affluent went into the creek, because it was cleaned up enough. We have to do that because we have a combination of small lot sizes, high water table, and people living close to the creek. And the state's regulations are pretty stringent, so where it used to be, you could put all your subject back in the ground, now, because of state regulations, you can't do that. So, we're stuck with doing a lot of these direct discharge systems, but we, we are hoping to do four in-ground systems, where we would put the final affluent in-ground. These are places where we've got enough land and the ground per well enough for us to do that.
So, you just, and your reason to do that is so you'll have some diversity of type tanks, or?
The reason that, we feel it's better to put it in the ground than put it in the creek. We just think it makes, from health-wise, environmental-wise.
Water protection and all that.
It's just, I think it just makes more sense, especially since we're gonna be using the same kind of heat technology that we know pretty much takes care of things, except we're gonna be able to put it back in the ground. And then, as Ryan said, we've got some things that we've learned, we didn't get as good advice as we thought we were getting when we did phase one, we've learned about a lot of things, that we need to go back and tweak and fix a little bit. So, that's where we're replacing some of these UV lights, we're replacing siphons with pumps, we're doing some things like that. And we're fortunate in a way that we're still moving forward, that we can still get state money to be able to do this, so that the project and the homeowners aren't stuck with these things.
Well, I think that speaks well for you, and of course, Ryan, but for you in particular, because I think the DEP people wouldn't permit this if they didn't have confidence in the work you're doing.
Well, and I think they feel they've put enough money in that they've gotta.
Well, we need to.
Do some more, they've gotta make sure that these things work. So, that's where we are with the project. I wanted to give you an update. We had talked a little bit about the counseling issue, where the school system is, and there's, there's not a handout for that. We have a group of folks who've been working on it, have contacted both our state senators, the State Department of Education, the governor's office, and Benidorm to try to move forward, to try to get some commitment of funding from those agencies to cobble together enough money to take care of being the council level of where it is. The school board's made a commitment to continue with the counseling program. Those of us who've worked with it feel the big problem is, especially at our schools where you've got middle school and elementary school combined, they were only gonna have one counselor. And the fear is that you've got all these hormonal middle school kids, the counselor's gonna spend all their time with that, and younger kids, the elementary school kids, are not gonna have the benefit of a counselor. So, we're trying to raise money to make sure we've got at least two in all the schools like that. So, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take for some of this stuff to unfold. I mean, the state legislature's meeting now, that budget's gonna have to be done pretty soon. I don't know whether we're gonna see a line item in there to help with the counselors, we're hoping that there will be. My thought is, if we can get some money from there, Benidorm, the next Benidorm talk to us in June, so we'll try to get the commitment from Benidorm. It may be that after those two come together, we come back to the commission and see if we can get commitment for some funding, just to help with the match. At this point, we don't have an exact dollar.
Well, and we won't know where we stand, we're right now in the budget process, getting ready to go in, but of course, sometimes big or little something, we always have a carryover, if there is any, and at that point, look at it at that time. Hope that you, mid-July, late July.
That would sort of work with all this stuff, hopefully. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for my current and future employment, too.
Next thing on the agenda is the Harts Community Center. I do know that the government are working good, we do have the new computers, each office has those. There is one issue that I would like to talk to the commission tonight, I'd like to have their authorization to begin proceedings in court to evict our renter in the trailer.
We, he'd been notified twice, or?
Twice.
This commission information, of course, this is a person who used to be a deputy, and he's no longer a deputy, but he hasn't moved out of his, our trailer there on the premises, so he has had due notice, and so I guess at this juncture, I entertain a motion to give Judy, maybe and myself, to get with the prosecutor and move in the direction of getting him removed from the premises. Okay.
So moved.
A motion in second. And we'll let you know.
Next thing is the McCorkle Community Center. Lawrence, you have anything?
Not really.
He gave us a report. I think each commissioner had one, left here in curling. Appreciate the job you're doing out there.
Sharon, you have anything about the outreach?
Everything's going good, and donations are still pretty good, especially my wife.
Thank you, Tish, Sharon. Good to see you, I heard you. There you go.
Okay, just a brief update on our healthy initiative. We have our luncheon and our weigh-in at the next meeting on the fifteenth. All the employees are excited. You're gonna see healthier employees here, and you're gonna see smaller employees.
On the new business, I need a motion to approve the bills that submitted for payment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. Be all yes vote. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the exoneration orders that submitted by Tracy Danciasasra.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All yes. Motion carries. I didn't see those.
I need a motion to approve the purchase of a trailer-mounted two-fifty KW-three-phase diesel generator from Cummings Crosspoint LLC in the amount of fifty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars to be paid through a homeland security grant as requested by Allen Holder, Director of Emergency Services.
So moved.
Second.
I think he did all his comparisons of costs, and was it the state bid list and that thing, or to get this figure we have, a lot of money, but it gave us the power we need, like a year ago when Lincoln PSD was without power and water for about a week. This'll be the units that we can move over there and set it down and plug in, have power or anywhere else that we need that kind of service. Be all yes vote. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the renewal of the lease agreement bond between the Lincoln County Commission and the Southwestern Community Action Council Incorporated for an office based at the McCorkle Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. Be all yes. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve appointments done in vacation, Lincoln County Commission, by Merle Gueye clerk.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. All yes. Motion carries.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a donation, but I think we've got a committee here that would like to talk to the commission about the Relay for Life.
She's putting you on to life, I think.
Well, this is the first time we've had Relay for Life in Lincoln County, and it is helping the research for American Cancer Society. We will have our first Relay for Life, um.
May eighteenth.
Yeah, May eighteenth, at six o'clock, at Lincoln Clinic and Care Center.
And for people in the audience that would like to participate, what do they need? Call Patty?
Yes. Call Patty at Lincoln Journal would be a good start. Or the Lincoln Board of Education, my name's Trina Barrett, and I can direct you to the website, or you can go online, relayforlife.org, and put in Hamon, West Virginia, and, or Lincoln County, and it'll bring you to the website. I think we have twenty-eight teams, so, yeah. Survivors will make the first lap, second lap will be the caretakers, of all the survivors, and then each team will be walking during the night until, hopefully till five o'clock.
So, it starts what time of evening?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, and goes continuously until?
Five o'clock.
Five the next morning.
I would just like to say that the team members should know that she's persistent. She continually sent me Facebook messages, and I would see her basketball game, she would stop and say, "Please, don't forget to put this on the agenda."
Worthy calls, Pishan.
And the money goes for research of cancer and a cure, and I'm a breast cancer survivor of seventeen months, and I'm on a pill now for the next five years that the National Cancer Society researched and got this pill, so I'm really, and we've got a great committee, they work very hard, and we're all excited about it.
And their goal was twenty thousand dollars, and we're fourth away there already, that's without the relay. We're over a fourth, yeah.
So, how does that work? How do, in a relay, people pledge so much money, or?
They do fundraising.
Fundraising.
Each team does fundraising, so we're gonna see a lot of that out in the community, and we've got members of committee in every, in Harts, Duvall, Gaunt Valley, and Hamon area, they're all spread out throughout the county.
Anyone can have a team, you know, anyone wants, just individual charges, or anybody wants a team can start a team, and ten dollars to join the team, and you have a T-shirt, so.
Well, we're celebrating more birthdays in Lincoln County, that is our theme.
So, if anybody wants to make a donation, do they have to go through the computer, or can they contact?
They can go through the computer, or they can just make out a check to American Cancer Society.
So, if anybody would wanna make a donation tonight, to?
Yes.
Give it to you.
We take cash checks, or credit cards. Don't mind.
And you can make it out to ACS, there's the Cancer Society.
Okay, we got a motion, I will second second, to provide a thousand dollars to help the Lincoln County group. All yes. Motion carries. We certainly appreciate you all, just, as things happen.
There's a thank you card, but.
I need a motion to approve a donation to the Lincoln County High School Skills USA chapter in the amount of one thousand dollars.
This is chair and committee's.
Yeah, this is the auto group that came here last year and gave us, last summer, and gave us a report on how well they did on the national thing, just, we're getting ready to go again for.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. All yes. Motion carries.
I need a motion to adopt the regional hazard mitigation plan as required by section three twenty-two of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Related Emergency Assistance Act, section one oh-four of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. All yes. Motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Joshua Stowers to the Lincoln County Economic Development Authority Board of Director.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. Be all yes.
Start a delegate.
Motion carries.
Yes, it's your delegate. I need a motion to appoint David Seis as administrator of the estate of Eugene Seis due to the death of the current executor, set bond at one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. Be all yes. Vote. Motion carries.
You wanna talk about this next thing you're just gonna do?
Uh, yeah, we have, the next item, we've talked about it a couple times, and there may be some discussion needed, but we have talked about adopting a policy, and we follow Boone County, if they have, as to testing for drugs for courthouse employees and elected officials. So, this is basically getting to that point, and if it's adopted, then we will put a document together that, and give that to all elected officials and employees, so they'll have it and know about it, and then we'll go from there.
Does Boone County have it for all their employees?
Basically, it was the research department, yes. But that was, I don't know, six weeks ago or something, they, I, fair, it's, I don't know, well, that's what we, you know, be a good sample, a good guide for us, if it's the pleasure of the commission.
What will the cost be of this?
It's not real expensive, but we have people come out and do drug testing now down at the community corrections program, but I don't know, like thirty dollars a test.
I think it's under ten dollars.
I know we do a tri-re, we test drivers out there. Our school board's done it a long time with their drivers, but I don't know if they've ever done it beyond that.
I mean, do we see this as a problem here for employees?
Well, I don't know that you see it a problem, I think it, I guess, there has been people come to me and told me that, that it's issued, we've had a couple of them, that basically, sort of, I can't help myself, I'm gonna have to leave employment, those kind of things, so. It's one of those things that's, you don't, or I don't know exactly how to deal with other than to listen, and if you can help somebody, put, move them in the direction of finding help and things like that, that would be my desire.
And this would provide us a chance to lead by opportunity, we could be tested as well?
Anybody could, yeah. I, I don't know that somebody refused to help, you know, that's, I don't know where we get that, but I think, my idea would be that, once we get it done, that we just, if we need to amend, work through it, it's one of those things that would have to be flexible to some extent, with all the new and all that.
One of the things, having, you know, dealing with drug screening all the time in my workplace and things, one of the things you have to make sure of is, you know, how you wanna handle situations where someone would fail, and, you know, what's the rule for that person failing versus, you have to have all these in place before and have them, but you can't really take it on a case-by-case basis. You also have to look at chain of custody, you know, who's gonna decide who makes the random screens, 'cause I know there's, there are people that would be concerned that it can be used as a political tool.
Yeah, maybe.
And, you know, I think one, and my other question is, is there any other county in the state that has this? I don't think.
I don't know.
Because the only ones I'm aware of that's been done this way are the police forces and things like that, that have responsibilities on the road and things of that nature, so. I think, and I also think we probably, if we have a talk to our prosecutor, and to talk to him about how we wanna handle these things before we adopt, because there may be things that we wanna have to change. We wanna get everything right, starting out, and not be, you know, one, one person failing the screen for whatever, another person failing the screen for whatever, and there'd be a difference in how you handle each of those people based upon what those drugs are and what their position in office was, or in working for these offices and things of that nature. So, there's a lot of, you know, I think a lot, I think it's really hard to take one that's geared toward law enforcement, as most of these are, and try to extrapolate those to everyone, without having the rules in place first. I think if we have the rules in place first, I can support about any problem, but I'd wanna know that patient A or patient B was treated exactly the same way before it ever happened, not waiting for it happens and say, you know, we'll give this one, we'll educate this one. Because I think you also have some responsibility into the rehab of those patients, say, I mean, rehab of those people when you find out, it's can't be just used as a tool to, you know, say, "Well, I don't like that particular person, let's go in and screen him," and then hope that, you know, the people that are doing the drug screening, you have to, you have to make sure who they are and, you know, what their qualifications are and things of that nature, which I don't think there'd be problems with that, because we do the screening for the, for rehab and things of that nature. But I do think you have to have, number one, I think there's problems with maybe the way you can interpret the law in case, you know, with elected official versus other people, you know, how you handle those people versus people that are hired at the, at the, whoever's in office, so. I think there's a lot of questions that.
But if you'd like to, you know, put those in variety, 'cause I think that would maybe...
Sure, no problem. Well, and, and what I'll do is go ahead and follow, you know, those things we do, like in Valley Health Systems, we have those sixteen clinics, and we screen everybody and things like that, I'll bring those to the commission so we can look at the way we handle those things, and then any other information, I can get them to, there's, there's several national agencies that are, that are trying to do this and things like that, so I think if we get those, that information together, and then see what the prosecutor says as far as what we can and can't do about it, and I think, then they don't have any problems.
Of course, we already have really a general drug-free workplace policy, yes, given already.
Right, and you wouldn't, you know, I'm sure, you know, a lot of people wouldn't want me doing the drug screens for everybody and things like that, you know?
Well, the drug screen has to be conducted, and that's the way their policy is, is to be conducted by a group that, they do the selecting, you just say, "Here's the group of people," and they, that random pick 'em out, and you don't give them names or anything.
Well, and you also, you know, along with your policy you have in place now, you can make sure that if you're suspicious of someone, how you handle those versus. that if you're suspicious of someone, how you handle those versus ones that are done randomly and things like that. So there's a, there's a, you know, it's a really complicated type thing when you get into it. And I want to make sure if we adopt a policy that it's enforceable, number one, but number two, it's legal.
And three, that we stop drugs.
Exactly.
I'd like to see us adopt this, but we could talk to the prosecutor, make sure we have anything in place to stay within the frame of the law.
And I will get to commission that information.
Yeah, just tell me it's there.
I'll get that to you soon.
Okay, yes, I'll take a motion to table this.
So moved.
I'll say.
You know, yes, motion is tabled.
I need a motion to schedule a special call meeting of the Lincoln County Commission for March the second, two thousand twelve, at twelve P M. in room one oh three of the Lincoln County Courthouse for the sole purpose to interview candidates and make selection for the sheriff's interim position.
So moved.
I'll say, does this fall within the guidelines of getting notice and things like that?
Yeah, we really had already, I gave Judy a, a big for you, she should go ahead and post the doors. And I just felt like, since we're going to meet, let's go ahead and have it on here as an agenda.
And then we'll post it Monday.
Being all yes, vote, motion carries. And at the end of the meeting here, we will, I have those applications and we will go through those just like we did before. Basically, each commission will go through and pick out at least three as they, as their choice, see how we're going to do that and end up interviewing three. So we'll post it back here in a minute.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the changes of the appointed early voting election officials as submitted by the chairman of the executive committees as follows. Transfer Republican official Larry Polly from Harts to McCorville and transfer Republican Randall Logan from McCorville to Harts to replace Democrat Amanda Sheldon with Democrat Kara J. Harless at McCorville and approve the following names as Democrat alternates Louise Nelson, Amanda Sheldon, and Pam Thompson.
Second. Motion is second. Oh yes, motion carries.
I need to get a drink.
I need a motion to approve amendments of the Lincoln County Commission meeting for January the nineteenth, two thousand twelve, to remove the wording which includes delegate District sixteen. Due to precinct fifteen, District three will be included in delegate District twenty-two with the following order. This was the old order that was motioned by Charles, Thomas Ramey, second by Charles Vance to approve the precinct changes as presented at the public hearing on January the twelfth, two thousand twelve. As follows, District one, Precinct one, Midway Elementary, Precinct two, Garrett's Bend Community Center, Precinct five, Woodville Firehouse, Precinct six, Mud River Fire Department, District two, Precinct seven, Big Ugly Community Center, Precinct eight, Harts, Pre-K through eight, Precinct nine, Ranger School, Precinct ten, Gown Valley Middle School. District three, Precinct eleven, Branchland Area, Gown Valley Middle School, Precinct twelve, Olfest School, Joey Agon School, The Onion Precinct thirteen, West Town Elementary, Precinct fourteen, Hamlin, Lincoln County High School, sixteen, delegate district. Precinct sixteen, part of District three voting in District one, at Duval Middle School to include Billy's Creek, Merritt's Creek, Tree, Falling Route three to Garrett's Bend Road, Top of Hill, Falling, Garrett's Bend Road, Left Side of Creek, I polished the road and both sides are polished the road specified into meds and mounds. Precinct sixteen, West Town Elementary, including Big Creek, which is part of delegate District sixteen.
It's Bear Creek.
Yes.
Yeah, it's part of Bear Creek.
And all this confusion, I have to take responsibility for it. That's when Judy was all sick and I tried to take the notes and write this down and I didn't get the exact what I was supposed to.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the request for reimbursement from the West Virginia Division of Culture and History for the County Records Management Preservation Grant Program in the amount of three thousand two hundred and six dollars. And the final project report and give Charles S. McCann precedent authorization to sign this stated documents.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second being all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to release the duties of Betty G. Byes as guardian of Paul Michael Byes.
Second. Motion is second being all yes, motion carries.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
I want to bring up a couple of things that I know people in the audience have talked to me about. One was a question that was brought up Saturday about the Mud River Fire Department. Was, they were wondering, you know, they have requested, the fire departments have requested the monies for their statewide meeting. And I think it's a forty-five thousand dollar total bill that we're going to have to come up with between the three fire departments or three, is it three or four fire departments in the area here that are putting in on that? I think something, something like that. They, they had a request that if we could possibly come up with ten thousand of that and help. And this allows them to participate in southern West Virginia, whereas they mostly have not.
Is this the same one that you were talking about, Harts, for the Logan and up to Earl Gray Center?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they, they just was kind of asking, you know, if we were going to give money, do we have any ideas as far as how much we can give?
I had this, I've looked at this.
And I think they're probably going to ask the other commissions for ten thousand on it too, so that's my understanding.
When is that date again?
It's an April. The date on that is August, sixteen seventeen, April.
Did he say somebody needing to know by April or registration or anything, or did he?
I don't know.
That's what I understood. We had some ideas as far as what kind of funding they can come up with at that time. But I think, you know, it's something we might want to.
Okay, we'll try to put it on the agenda the next time for something. I'm out.
The other thing is, one other thing is, same time I met with these ladies back here, they call themselves the panel producers. They work at the, they work out, I might say, at the Upper Mud River Fire Department. They have, along the same line as what we're doing here at the courthouse. And I think across the nation, we like people to be healthy and things like this. But I have some information here that they, they give to the branch commission, which includes some, they've had some articles, I think, in the Charleston Gazette.
It comes out? It comes out this Sunday.
This Sunday, but it includes all of them and what they've been doing up there. I, you know, they took this initiative on itself to be working out and doing these things. They got some things I donated up there that they could work out on and they just about wore them out. I looked at them and I was kind of afraid if they got on them, they might hurt themselves more than help themselves. But they have a total of weight loss. How much you guys all lost together up there? It was so tremendous, four hundred and some pounds.
Four hundred and fifty-eight pounds.
Four hundred and fifty-eight pounds. But what they wondered, and this is.
But we started this in June the sixth.
And this, you know, this is the kind of commitment that you want. You know, this is what makes all of us healthier is doing these type things. And I think, and I know they're, you know, as far as, they, they will let people, all the members of the community that want to participate can come in there and participate. And I thought, and I just thought with, you know, with us trying to make this a healthier place to live and things like this, and them already taking the initiative, but they did run into needing some monies to replace some, and I have all this information here for the commission, to replace some of that equipment up there for the community up there. And I thought since we were, you know, putting monies into the Corville Community Center and the Harts Community Center, that if they're, and because of their geographical location, it's kind of hard for them to participate in one of those if we could help them out in some way. I think they'd appreciate it.
We sure would.
One of the things we've been forcing too is working with, not only, I guess, Josh Stayers to help them get money from Corville, but Eric Butcher also in Harts. So maybe we need to get you all, give an application, start with them to, because they have been good to help. I mean, three good chunks of money. So, but we'll, we'll get with you, work something on that.
We appreciate it.
And the fire department would be willing to be the group that would accept the monies?
Of course, John has some.
It has nothing to do with the fire department.
No.
You don't use their building to?
We use their building, that's it. But that's the only thing we do. Chief lets us use the building. We sure appreciate him for letting us do that.
Trying to think about how to be able to get government money to you though. Because we, you have to have a five oh one C three or something. Do you have a group form? That's something we need to work on. We can try to get you some paperwork in place to get you a five oh one C three so you can accept government money.
Oh, and we sure appreciate it.
I'm just, I'm joined the rest of them. I mean, anytime we can do something to make us more help, that's what we need to do. And just, we just got to, we've got to do something for ourselves.
Yeah, sure.
The one, the one more thing that I have, I think, this fellow here that needed the road fixed, is he, where's he at? Is he, is he back there? I was given a petition the other day when I was here at the courthouse and I gave it to the administrator there. And it was for a petition to have a, they had a lot of trouble with a private road and it's not on the system. And I was just going to have Judy explain as far as where we're at as far as private roads and what we can and can't do on private property and things like that. But if no one's here, I'll just get in touch with him myself and talk with him about it, so. But other than that, that's all I have, I think.
Okay. Anyone else?
Are you going to reveal the names that put in the sheriff's decision?
Yes, yes, can we get, that'd be the last thing we do, yes. Yes.
We had, was priorly, prior discussed about the use of private homes for voting precincts. And I just have a question in regards to the Fed's precinct. It's now being moved from a school building to somebody's personal store building. Why was that decision made?
Well, basically, the Fed's building is just not really a suitable place. It's a part of accessibility, a part of stoned, a part of heat, a part of having too much sawdust and all that. Come to view, it's a wood shop. And so we tried to find another place, a store building, and what is, like a carryout type building. You guys willing to, it's not being used actually.
I think the poll workers from that precinct all signed a letter asking that it be moved. I don't know if the Republicans did not, but I know the Democrats did. Did the Republicans? Both Republicans and Democrats both did.
And my other question is, I'm from the Harts area and I've been told that after the daycare was closed up there, there was a whole shipment of playground equipment that came in to the Furlsburg Community Center. And it sat up there for a while, it was never installed. And then I was told, I don't know how true this is, that Judy Johnson, you obtained that playground equipment?
Go look in the basement of the Furlsburg Community Center. Judy Johnson didn't obtain that.
Well, that's what I was told. Well, is there any plans to get that playground equipment installed for the community?
Well, yeah, we're aware of the situation and his store down there in the basement. We're not sure, will we ever have another daycare or not? But I think the, maybe the new school had asked to look at and see if they could put it down there and use it. It's still there right now, but.
Well, I just know that the playground equipment that's at the community center is old, worn out. And people rent that facility, you know, for birthday parties and events. And so I was just asking, you know, where is it and why is it not being put out?
Well, we just didn't think it's, at the time, we still don't know how long we're going to be in that building. And once they decided to, build a new art school and start talking with the commission about moving down to the middle school, the old high school, we felt like, well, there's no use taking this new equipment and putting it up since we don't have the daycare. We don't even be on these premises, so it's just their store and carry down in the basement, so.
Well, is the basement like waterlogged or is that going on mold?
That area, that area is, some of it is not, but that area is, is in the dry.
That was a question.
Back in January, Aaron Fensel with the Big Ugly Community Center had called and expressed interest in starting a crime watch unit over there. And eight members of our crime watch went over there and met with them. And we had a good meeting. Some, some of the members over there wasn't sure whether they wanted to go forward or not. So Aaron called me again the other day and left a message on the answering machine and said that they had decided to go, you know, try to establish a crime watch unit over there and wanted us to come back over March the sixth, that's next Tuesday, but it's seven. So we're going to get some of our members together and go back over again and try to help them get started with that crime watch unit that they've got. And our crime watch unit, they've been trying to get a five oh one C three for over a year. And we, not successful, we even sent three hundred dollars and they never did cash the check or anything. We just wondered if maybe the commission could help us with that.
Have you done a five oh one C three before?
When we did it for the Maintenance Association, we had hired a lawyer. I think we spent about five hundred dollars.
It's a very lengthy process. And I've worked through this before. And once you apply, it takes months and months to hear anything back.
Well, we have the same secretary in our crime watch that we have with their wastewater maintenance. She applied for ours for something.
She did?
But it only, it only took like six months to get the one back for the wastewater. We don't, we don't know what the problem is.
Thinking that you could also apply for a temporary five oh one C three or temporary status while you wait for the full status to be approved. Something the assistant prosecutor can look at.
Maybe Dallas, you and I can get together and give us somebody upstairs, prosecutor assistant prosecutor, and see. But I'm just thinking, they probably won't have any more knowledge than you or I do about it. But they might be able to give us some direction or something. I don't care if tries him. I just don't want to try to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Vane, do you have any comments?
No, just that, you know, I can be more information to you if you ask. I asked to be here and I was up at the upper mud river fire department, I'm going to speak from there.
Mr. Vane?
Stay with Mud River. I've had a couple of different people call me about the recent newspaper article regarding our pursuit to have Mud River Dam Recreation Area turned into a state park and concern from residents of that area that if the state park would become a reality, people would be reluctant to use that area because there's no cell phone service, people from outside the county. So I would just like for the commission to take the lead on maybe contacting the cell phone providers and working with that area as we have for Ranger and the Harts area. Maybe if we start now, if the state park becomes a reality, those two things can coincide. Also on the seventeenth, sat through with the other two commissioners, the interviews for the county clerk and chair. I've been working with Lawrence Woods from the McCorville Community Center, trying to locate a person from that community to clean the, buff the floors and know that the floors are in dire need of being cleaned. And I think we've taken care and we've located a person in that community that will be willing to do that. Twenty-first, met as a member of the Board of Equalization on Mineral Day. Worked with the baseball parents to secure the baseball money and softball money that we voted on earlier. Today I met with Tracy Dempsey, the assessor. And there's a study that's being done across the state right now and it is a property tax equalization study. And the state put forth two to four million dollars to have a. forth $2 to $4 million to have appraisals done of property taxes across West Virginia and they hired people from Pennsylvania, Michigan, and other places instead of hiring appraisers here. I don't know why, but today the report was brought to the assessor's office for him to review. He will have until March 9th and his staff to report back to that group of any changes that need to be made to the report. Beth Gross, who is with the Autism Society, dropped this plaque off for the county commissioners, thanking us for the $1,000 that we gave the Autism Society last year that was used during their conference to see to that Lincoln County families would be able to attend and it would take care of their accommodations for staying overnight and their gasoline. And as I mentioned earlier, Trina's already left, but I've been working with Trina and Trina's a dear person, a dear friend and I'm glad that we were able to help to relieve her life. That's all I have.
Okay, we did conduct our several meetings on the Board of Equalization and was able to get all that included February 21st with the mineral day. It does appear that our mineral values in Lincoln County are on the decrease, so we need to be aware of that and then also see if there's something, maybe three years ago, I'm not sure when, but sometime in the recent past, we gave the state tax department authority to review all of our minerals values and try to resolve those before they came to us. And I guess when I've seen the report this year on the minerals, the second time going down, I think, well, maybe we need to review that process again. Maybe, it could be it's all right there, right? It could be they're easing up on people who complain, which would be the big mineral owners, the people with the major coal owns and oil and gas. So it's something for us to be thinking about as the commission. February 22nd, we had representative down from Supreme Court and one of the Supreme Court justices, Robin Davis, to look at the building next door, the church building as a possible judicial annex. They did determine, by walking through and looking at the drawings and things, that there's more than enough space about family court and magistrate court as well as having sufficient, enough space to do filing whereby that the records for those two different court systems could be in that building and not have to be up here and going back and forth as they do now. Which Judge Eldwood said it was a big hardship to him because he schedules everything a week ahead of time. He brings all the records down Monday, sends them out to him Friday evening, so, but the magistrate's a little bit different. February 22nd, also that evening, we had the public meeting on the Hatfield McCoy Trail System at McCorkle. Some of the people in here were there that night. Pretty good turnout. There's a lot of concern, a lot of interest in developing the east part of the trail system there in the county, the Ivy Branch area and it basically was concerns from people who wanted the ATV, concerns from people who wanted off-road vehicles. What they have come up with, with the guy for Hatfield McCoy, actually, he works for them, he's actually from the Great Hall Institute of Transportation, does the design work in developing the trails and he basically says he has a design now that the Ivy Branch will be able to accommodate most of the ATV and the, I call them the doom buggy, the off-road vehicle type things. So they have not begun the making of the trails, but he does have pretty much all surveyed out where they'll be and been able to keep those separated and have two separate systems and we would be the first to have that type system in the Hatfield McCoy because right now the off-road is not in any of the systems, so we'll be the first and of course we'd also be first coming down Quarter G, so we think it's a big plus. And at that meeting also, it was discussed that there was, had already been applied for coal mitigation funds to build a bridge, swinging type bridge, across the little Coal River connecting the Lincoln County and the Boone County trail systems with a swinging bridge. It would be wide enough for those off-road vehicles, but not for public traffic vehicles. They believe that this trail system will be ready and open by the fall of rice, so maybe October or something like that. They think they'll have it pretty much designed and ready to go by May and somebody was there, we had two or three people was there. If I mess up on it, jump right in and make sure we get the message out there. The thing I did receive was a call that night over there, it was a concern, where are we going to have the trailhead? The trailhead being the place that you check in, you buy your decals and and there seems to be some, we call disagreement, but everybody's on the same page anyway. Where should it be? Should it be over on Route 3? Should it be in the McCorkle immediate area? Or should it be down McCorkle Road closer to Quarter G? So the next morning, I did receive a call from Jeff Bluth, the director of Hatfield McCoy, and he said, before we talked and discussed on the way back that night, going back to Logan, that they wanted to us to think about if we could get private investors, rather than having a trailhead run by Hatfield McCoy, would it be possible if we would provide the gravel on the trail system and have a place for parking in three different spots, that in order to make this work, you'd have to have private investors to say, well, we will build a trailhead here on the Route 3, we'll build one in McCorkle, we'll build one over here off of Quarter G. And actually, all three of them would be able to sell the decals and run the system. So I told him it sounded, you know, on the surface sounded pretty good. We don't know where that's going to go yet, but that is certainly something that might work best in that area, but we're still having, everything seems to be good and people who own property developers, they are really working with us and are going to, I think we're going to see something really good there by fall. February 23rd, we were able to have an emergency special meeting of the commission to accept the recent appointment that Jerry offered for chair. No news to it, but it was one of those things that we had to have that meeting in order to do and we are fixing to move into that tonight to take the next step. Same evening, February 23rd, 5 o'clock, I serve on the West Virginia Extension Service Board and we meet at least once a year, sometimes more, but the annual review comes up in this time of year, February, and basically looking at the people who work at West Virginia Extension and programs they have and sort of looking at those and giving direction, what do we want? Are you doing all right? And those kinds of things. Some dialogue developed and hearing reports from each of those people and also it's really a formal reemployment or employment time for the state that works at the West Virginia Extension Service. 28th of February, this week, attended the meeting of the Farmland Protection Board. We're still getting things accomplished out there. As I mentioned before, one of the biggest issues we're facing is the impact that coal, oil, and gas minerals are going to have on the possibility of making a farm protected under the rules of the Farmland Protection. So we do have a meeting coming up with our geologist and with Dr. Smith and with a gentleman that works for, I guess, the state, but he is responsible for looking at the and interpreting the regulations in order to make you qualify for the federal money. So we have a meeting set coming up, I believe it's this coming week, in Flatwoods. So the project that we started, Farmland Protection Moving, but not as fast as we may have thought it might have.
I'd like to, there's a couple of comments on one. Mr. McPhen was talking about there when I was a member of Hatfield Court Board of Directors. We addressed this issue of doom buggies in Harts area because we were talking, a lot of the people have doom buggies up there and wanted to make sure they weren't excluded. And it'd always been a sticking point with board directors before because it was difficult to regulate for safety with doom buggies and things of that nature, but they evidently have worked that out. And it's going to be a big boon for our system because none of these other systems are built to take those doom buggies on. So anybody wants to ride a doom buggy, they're going to have to come to Lincoln County and do it. The other comment is the Boone County system when it was built was so small, it's really not been a very attractive system. So I think this bridge over to the Boone County system is really going to help Boone County also, but it will also give us one of the bigger systems where you could actually ride in these two different counties here. The one comment I forgot a while ago was I wanted to bring up again is that I had talked with the commission before and the public before about the DNR's willingness to put in a trout stock impoundment in Lincoln County and they've really talked about maybe even two, that we need to be able to find someone or someplace that we can get proximity of, make a five acre impoundment. That's the size to look at, which is about like the Lick Creek Pond over in Wayne County, it's next to Eastland. But they are willing to stock the, they're willing to come down if we find an area that, or two or three areas that they can look at, they're willing to come down and say, yeah, this is a workable type thing, this has enough water in it and, you know, whatever. So if anyone in the public, you know, and I think this is a great thing for the Hatfield McCoy area too, if we could put one in that area to offer also trout fishing when these people come down, it's another draw. But I do think we could probably get a couple in the county, but I would like the public to, if they have anywhere that they think might, we might be able to work in doing that, to get in touch with the commission and let us get some people from the DNR over there to look at it and possibly work with four of engineers. We have to do some damage or something of that nature, so. But it really is just a matter of somebody that owns a piece of land that they're willing to do this for us. And, you know, there's a lot of old people like me this time of year, we don't have much to do other than trout fishing. We're the only county in southern West Virginia that doesn't have a trout impoundment that's stocked by the DNR and we all pay taxes to them, so I think, yeah.
Wouldn't it be more feasible to use Bubba Anderson in the western confines? He delivers trout, any kind of fish.
Yeah, well, what I was trying to get is where we wouldn't have to pay for the trout. I mean, you know, we already, you know, trout stamps pay for them for the public anyway and I haven't talked with any of those private people about that, but I know the director of the DNR that I talked to, he was very willing to work with us and trying to get a couple of public impoundments that are stocked by the DNR.
How about that spillway at the Mud River Dam?
Well, I think we talked about that before here and I think if the water's cold enough there and things, but you have to have the agreement of the landowners for a particular length of area before you can stock that because they have to allow public access on it if we stock a public trout and things of that nature. But now, you know, we're more than willing, one of the areas they had talked about was that area, the first two miles below the dam and things of that nature, so that's probably a viable place to do that if we could get the landowners to participate and let people be able to travel on the creek, I mean, the riverbanks out there. But yeah, I think the water quality there, also the water quality in Big Oakley is good enough for trout too. And so that's another area, if we had landowner participation, we could, they would stock those streams once they've done their environmental studies and things of that nature. Lisa?
Whatever happened to the pond of the old Big Oakley State Park?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know either. I mean, is that back in the private hands or, I don't know what happened.
I know the DNR supervises that, don't they, over there still?
Harts area, yeah.
And I don't know how big that pond was, but I mean, I don't, I don't know. That's another thing. But I just wanted to bring that up because I think this is an opportunity we have to offer another recreational thing to do here in the county and there's a lot of people I know that do that and when they go over to Eastland to trout fish or when they go up the mountains to trout fish, they're spending their money up there, so they can spend their money here and fish also.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we have, the following people have applied for the position of sheriff, which is eight, nine and a half months, whatever, finish out the term once the position will be vacated. We understand that it could be next week. Brian Lars, Kim Cecil, Timothy Combs, Gary Limble, Cyrus Neil Triplet, John Swan, and David Allen Vickers. We closed the application at 12 noon today. I waited a little bit after that and finally decided not going to get any more, so we have seven and I've looked through them and I'll pass them down and here's a little paper and I think if you all will, if we can do it similar to what we did before, you look at them and on a paper, pick out the, maybe the top three that you like, that you think would be suitable and... Once you made that selection, then we would compare the three of us and the three that got the most votes would be the ones we interviewed, or interviewed. The interviews are set, as you're seeing on the minutes there, just a reminder, tomorrow. So what we'd like to be able to do is once you leave, finish this process here, that we would request Judy to contact the people that would be scheduled for an interview tomorrow and make those arrangements. Last time we had basically 15 minutes, that seemed to be sufficient. I did ask Judy to add another question on the question that we had prepared in advance and that would be, if a candidate for the sheriff position, do you have any business related activities that might prohibit you from serving?
Excuse me, the Limble, is he already a deputy?
Yes, yes. Gary Limble, there's, I should probably have two or three Gary Limbles around. This is one, a deputy now.
Wasn't he turned down before?
No, that was a different Limble. There's two, there's two of them, two Limbles on there.
Did Mr. Cecil define the position before? What did you say? I said, did Mr. Cecil, was that the man, his friends tried to pull the board?
He served two terms as sheriff before.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me just look again. We all need to work the way. This was, it's Gary W. Limble Jr., that's, I should have probably made that clear. All right, Cyrus Neil Triplet, David Vickers, Kim Cecil. Cyrus Triplet.
Well, that's what I was saying, if just one shows up, it would be my suggestion, we might want to pick up some of these other guys and whatever, I mean...
I almost suggest that back in the week when there wasn't very many people applying, or maybe we should have looked at the old list too, but...
But just, you know, just in case, I want to mention a lot.
Well, if we feel, I think if we go in and do the interviews as commissioner, I feel that if we don't feel we've got what needs to be done for the office of sheriff, that we redo it. I think it's too important not to do it.
I agree.
Anything else before the commission?
So is the Triplet, did you say?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That'll be open if anybody wants to be here for the interview. Open meeting. Okay, hearing nothing else coming for this mission?
Want to talk to the county commissioners about their budget workshop scheduled for March 8th?
What they do.
Understood.
Okay, Thursday. Okay, hearing nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
So, yes.
7:15. We stand adjourned.